So we're gonna go ahead and get started. I appreciate everyone for coming out. I appreciate all of my Washington Lee students who came out.
Woo!
Yes. This Lord A.P. Dove class was kind enough to do this beautiful backdrop for us. These kids are talented, they are. This Lord Baker here at the back, thank you. Alright, so we're gonna get started. My name is Zakia Worthy.
Yay!
Yes. Um, Just Advocacy is my newly formed organization. I'm gonna actually read specifically from script because my nephew Jackson, Whitney Cronodol's son, is going to be doing the translation in Spanish, okay? So normally I go off, but I'm gonna read it. Hi, I'm Zakia Worthy, CEO of my newly founded organization called Just Advocacy. Don't Google me yet, I have just gotten started. All I have done is picked out a name. Just Advocacy was birthed in the spirit of empowering people of color who have routinely and historically been excluded from seats at the table to recognize our power and influence in changing policy through progressive advocacy.
Hola, soy Zakia Worthy, gerente de la organización llamada Just Advocacy. Just Advocacy nació, nació la fuerza a las personas de color para reconocer su poder y enculpirse en el cambio de políticas a través de las políticas de la organización.
I partnered with Whitney Cronodol, Jackson's mom, and she's the president of the Cronodol firm. Whitney is an attorney who has dedicated her practice to counseling minority and female entrepreneurs, as well as representing local children pro bono in immigration court to help them secure legal status. Whitney is currently traveling abroad on the, I'm on the coast right now in Italy, so yay. So while she's gone, her son Jackson, who is a native Arlingtonian and former student of the Escuela Key, is here representing for her. He's an eighth grader at the immersion program at Dunston, and he's going to do our translations.
Yo trabajo con Whitney Cronodol, presidenta de la firma Cronodol. Whitney es una abogada que ha dedicado su práctica a asesorar mujeres y empresarios de minorias, así como representar a niños locales, locales, en forma gratuita en la Corte de Inmigración para ayudarlos a obtener un estatus de cargo. En este momento, Whitney está en el extranjero, pero su hijo Jackson Frederick, un nativo de Arlington, ex alumno de la Escuela Key, y es un estudiante de octavo grado en el programa de inmersion en Houston. Está aquí en su nombre para dar la traducción que les dé.
The disenfranchisement of people of color in this country is not accidental nor has it been unintentional. But as, excuse me, as President Barack Obama, one of my two favorites, Jim Carter's the other one, as he said, "We are the ones that we have been waiting for." We have a distinct opportunity in this current climate to effectuate change and bring about just policies which will in turn lead to a more equitable society.
La liberación de derechos a las personas de color en este país no fue accidental y involuntaria, pero como el vivo el presidente Barack Obama, somos los que hemos estado esperando. Tenemos una oportunidad clara en este tiempo actual para efectuar cambios y generar políticas justas que a su vez conduzcan a una sociedad de nuevo.
Thank you for coming here tonight. Arlington is at its finest when we give voice to all of our multi-layered community. When we empower people of color, we empower us all, and this must be the true Arlingtonian way.
Gracias por venir aquí esta noche. Arlington está en su mejor momento cuando le damos voz a nuestra diversa comunidad. Cuando damos fuerza a las personas de color, damos fuerza a todos nosotros. Este TMC, la buena manera, manera de Arlington.
Thank you. Let's give Jackson a round of applause.
Hi, good evening, buenas noches. My name is Gabriela Uro, and I live at ASPA. Uh, this is an organization that began two years ago. It was founded by a number of parents, real parents, in Arlington Public Schools that came together because we saw the need for a community organization to provide a platform for parents to learn from each other, to exchange information and advocate for our students in navigating the Arlington Public Schools. Um, the executive committee of ASPA is formed by, can you hear me? Okay. Is formed by, um, Janice Valazuela, who's in the back, if you can wait, please. Lili Marzilla, who I think was wearing some clothes. Tane Talento, and also Cynthia Pocoyestup, who is a more than likely stuck on 66 kind of kid from Tyson's Corner, so she'll join us shortly. Um, this organization has been focusing on educating and forming and providing guidance to Hispanic families, students, and community members in Arlington. For our Hispanic families that are here, some of the challenges have to do with just knowing how to navigate the system, but in doing that work, we realize that it wasn't just about the Hispanic families. For a number of families, we struggle with understanding how to navigate the system. Um, and so we've really been joining forces and working across, um, groups to make sure that we can support all of our families. It's a pleasure for me to be here tonight, representing ASPA and welcoming you to this event. Uh, we did this event a year ago, but what's exciting about this year is that we joined forces with Just Advocacy and the Cronodol Law Firm, sorry about that, um, in having this event that, as Zakia mentioned, is a true testament to how we can come together on behalf of our communities in Arlington, to really make sure that our issues, our interests are heard, um, together because together we stand strong, and I very much appreciate that.
Buenas noches, me llamo Gabriela Uro, y estoy con ASPA. Le doy la bienvenida a todos que están aquí, sobre todo a nuestra comunidad latina, para la que, para quien hemos estado representando, ayudando en entender cómo se manejan las escuelas de Arlington y cómo podemos hacer que nuestros hijos sean exitosos. El año pasado hicimos un evento similar a este, pero este año tenemos el gran placer de poder unir nuestra fuerza con Just Advocacy y con la firma de Cronodol para hacer este evento y representar a las comunidades afroamericanas como la Latina en cuestión de nuestras necesidades. Le damos la bienvenida a todos ustedes y también a los candidatos. Gracias.
Hello, my name is Ansah Uster. I'm currently a sophomore at WNL, and I will be introduced being Delegate Lopez. Delegate Lopez currently serves the 49th District in the Virginia House of Democrats. Born from immigrant parents, he has tirelessly worked to protect immigrants' rights to work and obtain their education. He has successfully extended Medicaid benefits to immigrant mothers and their children, and he helped pass the Affordable Housing Trust Fund individually, helping reduce the cost of homeownership state fund. He previously served as Assistant Administrator for Congressional and Legislative Affairs of SBA under President Barack Obama, and continues to be an active Democrat fighting for diversity and civil rights for all. He is also currently working as a minority whip in the state office. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Stand back here for a second. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for being here. Thank you for holding this forum. The fact that you brought everyone together and you brought the Latinx community and the African-American community together in Arlington says so much about our community, and it's so very important that we understand that we share so many issues, we share so many values, and there are so many obstacles in our way regarding public policy in the Commonwealth that we need to address and tackle and fight. Along those lines, I just wanted to mention a few of them that I hope everyone can be thinking about, not just tonight, but over the next several months, during the upcoming specials, uh, during the upcoming session of the General Assembly and in the years to come. We're only now beginning to tackle the school-to-prison pipeline in, in Arlington, in Virginia. Studies that came out from the Legal Aid Justice Society just last week prove that Latino and African-American children are exponentially more affected by issues of expulsion, suspension, and we're only now beginning to take those important baby steps to rectify that situation. Um, in-state tuition, which means an incredible amount to me and my family, and, uh, my mom actually was a high school guidance counselor at WNL High School for 32 years, so thank you to all the WNL generals for being here tonight. Fact is that that needs to be part of the code of the Commonwealth of Virginia. These kids are our kids. They're valedictorians, they're the future leaders of Virginia, and we should not be putting up the stop sign to our friends and neighbors and our children to get in-state tuition and get an education and further their futures. Um, driver's licenses, I like that, but, drivers licenses. We also need to make it easier for folks, no matter who you are, to drive safely on our roads, and make it easier for folks to get from their, to their jobs. And then, uh, for undocumented individuals. The Social Safety Net in Virginia, we are constantly not doing what we need to do in terms of the Social Safety Net in the Commonwealth. In our budget, budgets are really moral documents. They say who we are as a state, and more often than not, we're not putting the funds in for the kinds of Social Safety Net programs that we need to be for our, our new Americans and for our minority communities, and in different areas that are exponentially more impoverished around the Commonwealth. And then, something that I've been fighting for for a very long time on top of in-state tuition is making sure that when the police or a first responder approaches an immigrant or a new, a new, a undocumented individual or a new American, that they're not asking about immigration status. Just in the first eight months of the Trump administration, the number of, the percentage of domestic violence reports in Arlington County amongst immigration populations went down 75%. The number of sexual violence reports went down in the same populations, went down 85%. And that's not because they're, those situations are not happening, it's because the individuals who are either victims or witnesses of these kinds of attacks are scared that if they report these attacks, that they will be caught up in the ICE detention process. So that needs to be changed. We had important community policing efforts in the Commonwealth and in Arlington that have been effective, and if we're not taking into account that community police, those community policing processes that we have in place, we're making all of us less safe. So I want to thank you. The 49th District that we're in right now, which I represent, has over 100 languages spoken in it, over 50 languages spoken in Wakefield High School, our local high school. We are the rich tapestry of what Virginia's becoming. I find that I'm having to explain that rich tapestry to folks in other parts of the Commonwealth who either don't see diversity, or maybe don't want, or, or don't see diversity in their communities, or maybe don't want to see community, diversity in their communities. It's important that these kinds of forums continue, and that these not just be one-time things. It's so, I, I thank you so much for coming together. Thank you so much for, for making this happen this evening, and I hope you'll do it for years to come. Thank you very much.
I am a sophomore at Washington Lee High School, and I will be introducing Carol Miletta. Carol Miletta has been involved with parent education for nearly 17 years, beginning at the Parent Encouragement Program, where she served on the Board of Directors and continues to lead parenting classes and present community talks as a certified parent educator. She is co-founder and managing partner of Guardian Parenting Consultants, where she designs and presents parenting programs, consults directly with families, and creates customized tools to assist parents as they struggle to encourage their children's healthy growth and development. Carol speaks locally and nationally to parents groups on various topics, including positive discipline, social development, and wellbeing, academic achievement, and cultural awareness, just to name a few. She is also the host of Parenting 41 Moms, a radio show for parents and caregivers, where she explores various matters affecting family life. In all that she does, she strives to present information parents need from sources they can trust. Carol has lived with her family in Arlington for 24 years, and she and her husband are the proud parents of two sons who are now attending college. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that introduction, and welcome, everybody. Thank you for coming out, and I want to applaud the efforts of the three organizations responsible for putting this together. We're here to talk about issues and concerns that affect the Black and Latinx community, and this is a wonderful opportunity for the candidates to explain their positions on these matters. We will start by allowing our candidates to make opening statements, and they will each have three minutes to do so. At the conclusion of the debate, each candidate will have two minutes for closing statements. To start, I will ask questions that were submitted by members of our community, and each candidate will have two minutes to answer the questions. I will keep time, but I will also be assisted by a volunteer here who will give you each visual cues. I ask that candidates please observe the time limit so that we can address as many topics as possible, giving you the best opportunity to share your views for the community and for them to understand those views as we head to this very important election day. Aside from questions that were submitted in advance, we hope to have time for questions from our audience here today. I ask that we all remember that this is a civil discourse between candidates as well as between candidates and community members, all of whom care about the future of Arlington County. I request that candidates and audience members strive to be respectful of each other, refraining from personal attacks, interruptions, and outbursts, and personal questions or attacks on either of these candidates will not be allowed. So let's begin, shall we? The first, oh, first I should, I should point out that, um, that Barbara Cannon will be making the first opening statement.
Carol, thank you very much. Can you all hear me? I have this on. This is on? Good. Carol, thank you for moderating this evening. Zakia and Gabriela, thank you so much for organizing as well as your team. Um, this is gonna be a really wonderful discussion this evening, I'm looking forward to it. Huge shout-out to the students and thank you to the organizers for bringing students up to be speakers and translators. This is so much about what we are about in Arlington Public Schools. Our students are truly role models for positive constructive engagement. Um, they truly are proud of and celebrate our diversity in our schools and are wonderful representatives and ambassadors for demonstrating what makes Arlington Public Schools strong. So thank you all so much for coming out. Audrey, look forward to our conversation this evening. I'm Barbara Cannon, and I've had the privilege of serving on the school board for the last four years. This summer, I completed my term as Chair of the Board, and tonight, I'm pleased to be here to ask for your support for another four-year term. I've lived in Arlington for 25 years with my husband and two boys. They were both K-12 Arlington Public School students, and they're now both in college. I'm a PhD economist and children's book author, and I've been involved in our schools and community in a variety of ways for the last 25 years, on PTAs, school board, and county board committees, and I'm the co-founder of a youth sports league. I've brought to the school board a mindset about supporting the whole child. The idea that we need to ensure every student in our schools are healthy, safe, and supported, as well as academically challenged and engaged. I've worked hard to support students in many ways, including mental health resources, healthy meal programs, gender inclusion, and expansion of STEM, arts, outdoor learning, and sports programs. I've strongly supported our many alternative programs to ensure that all students get the support and flexibility they need. Programs like Langston, Arlington Community High School, New Directions, and Career and Technical Education, and more. These programs exist because caring, hard-working staff, sometimes decades ago, saw a need and had a vision. It's one of the many reasons that I'm a strong voice and advocate for our teachers and staff. I know how much they care. I know they have ideas, and they truly want everyone of our students to succeed. I was proud last month to have the endorsement from the Arlington Education Association, and that's the group that represents Arlington Public Schools teachers. Going forward, I will continue to work to ensure their pay increases every year, that their voices are heard and respected, that they have the opportunity to innovate, and importantly, I will work to prevent class sizes from increasing. I recognize that as a school, as a school board member, my work rests on the shoulders of committed staff and a committed community that fundamentally believes in public education for all. I'm proud of my record on the school board, I'm excited about the future, and I look forward to our discussion this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we will hear from Audrey Clement.
Welcome. I'm Audrey Clement, the incoming candidate for Arlington School Board. I'm a 14-year Westover resident and civic activist with a PhD in political science and current member of the Arlington Transportation Commission. I was also sponsored by the Congressional Black Caucus as a Congressional Fellow in the 100th Congress. I'm running because I'm concerned about the direction of the current school board. On June 7th, the school board ran through a resolution to change the name of Washington Lee High School with no public notice despite widespread opposition to the name change. The decision was not even on the agenda of the June 7th school board meeting. The other day, a Black parent confronted me over my opposition to the name change, arguing that white Confederate Civil War generals must be repudiated in order to advance Black civil rights leaders. This is news to Charles Augens, who wrote to me the other day. Quote, "History cannot be changed. Whether we agree or disagree with it, it is what it is. As the first African-American to graduate from WNL in 1961, to now change the name is to change my history, and I will not have anyone do that." End of quote. It is clear to me that the integration of WNL in 1959 by Augens and others is an iconic event that should be celebrated, not suppressed. Furthermore, I believe this under-the-radar decision was motivated by a cynical desire to divert attention from the elephant in the APS classroom, namely the minority student achievement gap, which is 24.8 percentage points for Hispanics and 22.4 percentage points for Blacks. APS is spending way too much for new classroom capacity, in fact, 2.5 times the state average per pupil. For example, the price tag on the new 775-seat Wilson High exceeds $100 million, while Loudoun County's new 1800-seat Independence High will come in at $108 million, or less than half the per pupil cost. Some argue that construction costs are higher inside the Beltway, yet both Alexandria and Fairfax County have halved the cost of new classroom capacity by repurposing existing buildings. APS also spends too much for instruction. The Washington Boards of Education Guide reports that Arlington spends $19,340 per pupil per year, $4,500 more than Fairfax County. Some argue that the expenditure is worth it if it buys better schools, yet Virginia Department of Education statistics indicate that all Arlington High Schools are on a downward trend. If elected, I pledge to keep the name the same for Washington Lee High School, reverse declining test scores, close the minority student achievement gap, get more bang from the school board's buck, and listen to the, to the concerns of all taxpayers, whether or not they have children in the system right now.
Thank you very much. Okay, and we flipped a coin at the beginning, and so Audrey Clement will always be second to answer the questions. So our first question concerns school discipline policy as it relates to students of color. Uh, community members are seeing astonishing numbers of African-American and Latinx students facing disciplinary actions across the board, and they've cited these statistics. African-Americans are 11% of the population, yet account for 30% of in-school and 30% of out-of-school suspensions, and 25% of all law enforcement referrals. Latinx citizens make up 24% of the total population, yet represent 41% of all in-school suspensions, 33% of out-of-school suspensions, and 41% of law enforcement referrals. This seems to point to racial bias. What solutions do you propose to eliminate racial bias in the administration of discipline in our county's schools?
Thank you very much for that question. So, uh, first of all, I want to make sure you all know that the school board is very aware of this data and have been concerned about it. In fact, this past year, we went through a process called the Strategic Planning Process. We really set our goals for six years at a time, um, every six years, and this past year, we had a discussion with a community committee and discipline and the idea that it does need to be representative of our community is a fundamental objective now as part of our strategic plan. So it's something we're gonna have our eyes on regularly. Um, as part of that, our staff now, at the highest level, our Assistant Superintendent for Administration, um, has made a number of proposals, um, in the area of what's called alternatives to suspension. Um, this very idea that, uh, kids get in trouble, that, um, that needs to be addressed in a way that keeps a child in school, because not being in school is fundamental to not being able to succeed. That's exactly what the school-to-prison pipeline is at that level of secondary. So we want to be sure that we have alternatives in place. The school board actually funded that. Alfonso mentioned the idea that your budget are your values. Um, what we fund is what we are able to do at the school board level, and we are funding alternatives to suspension. So we have really put, um, a number of things in place. I want to make clear that even as we talk about suspensions and expulsions, and first of all, those are, expulsions are extremely rare in Arlington, but I want to make clear that we also need to understand that the idea of the school-to-prison pipeline starts at the earliest ages. If you're a child in elementary school and you're getting in trouble and your teacher starts calling you the troubled kid, if you're, if the teacher starts referring to you as the kid who can't learn or is having trouble, um, that's going to affect that student, and that is what the pipeline is. We understand that, and, um, we want to do what we can, especially to ensure that all teachers have the tools they need. They need to have the training to understand diversity and cultural competency, and to understand how to work with all types of kids, so they get that positive enforcement, rather than feeling like they can't succeed in our schools, because it's absolutely not true. Everyone of our students can succeed.
Thank you. The first thing to do in eliminating racial bias in our school system is to stop sweeping it under the carpet, as APS is currently doing, by constantly trumpeting its achievements while ignoring its failures. The second thing to do is to stop offering symbolic solutions to real problems. Changing the name of Washington Lee High School will no more benefit Arlington minority students, particularly those with disciplinary problems, than placing a Band-Aid on an open wound. That is in fact what the school board cynically elected to do on June 7th in a major decision that was not even placed on the school board's meeting agenda that day. Now, regarding, uh, how to deal with the prison, the school-to-prison pipeline, I would say this, that this phenomenon is actually a function of the achievement gap, because students who realize that they're failing in school often lose interest in school and, uh, develop other pursuits that lead to criminal activity. So it's clear that the best way to deal with the school-to-prison pipeline is to deal with its fundamental cause, which is the achievement gap. And the principal way in which I would deal with that is to offer tutoring, after-school tutoring, to kids who need remediation. I think that first of all, this will improve their scholastic performance and will just, therefore, reduce, uh, the impetus to, uh, to be a truant, and also, it will, uh, incre, it will keep, it will get them off the streets. Um, as an adjunct to that, I propose a robust tutoring program in all schools that are underachieving, and encourage the school board to consider the possibility of recruiting volunteers among, uh, retired persons in our county to tutor our students either at school or at home. Thank you very much. Now, as a follow-on to, um, this discussion of discipline policy, um, here is a long question that I've had to paraphrase, incorporating the concerns of several, uh, community members about the role of Arlington County Police Officers serving as school resource officers or SROs in our schools. Now, they've observed that the presence of officers in schools has increased, and with officers getting very much involved in disciplinary actions. Now, given the concerns previously cited for students of color regarding the disproportionate rate of, um, discipline for students of color, combined with news and profiling, killings of unarmed Black boys, and fears of law enforcement among undocumented immigrant communities, please first, speak on the role you see for SROs, and two, community, community members have also posed the question of whether resources would be better spent for social service and counseling instead of the SROs. Would you want me to answer first? Oh, okay. Alright, well, I certainly, uh, agree with the proposal to, uh, redirect resources from school, uh, school resource officers to counseling. I think that is definitely the better way to go. Uh, the statistics that you have presented are alarming, uh, insofar as, uh, people of color are being... The statistics that you have presented are alarming insofar as people of color are being indiscriminately targeted possibly by these officers, and so I, I am not in favor of that. However, I am in favor of police in the schools to prevent terrorists. Now, I understand that Arlington does have, APS does have a program in place to deter violence in the schools, but this does not, this should not require the targeting of students, rather, it should require deterring ex, people from outside the school community disrupting activities within the schools. So yeah, I support that program.
Okay. Thank you.
We have School Resource Officers, one School Resource Officer at every secondary school in Arlington, high schools and middle schools. Our elementary schools share School Resource Officers. They do perform an important function, and as Alfonso mentioned, their training is in community safety, which is a way of working with the community to keep everyone safe, but also in a non-threatening way. We spent the last year, we have heard from the community however, and a couple of years ago, I was the liaison to the Arlington Partnership for Children, Youth, and Families. We took that on as a community conversation, something we wanted to bring into the open door about some of the issues that parents were discussing and advocates were discussing. We have spent a couple of years now, and especially the last year, in association with our CCPTA, our county Council of PTAs, leadership there, we've worked on our new memorandum of understanding. So School Resource Officers are county employees, they work for the police, they are in our schools, they're not APS employees, so we have to have an agreement. And as part of that, we've worked on the issues that we had heard about from the activists, advocates, in terms of issues about whether police were getting involved in things they shouldn't, and whether there was bias, and certainly making sure that every student, that the School Resource Officers understand that students have rights and that students understand their rights. So we are working on that, we have the new agreement in place, we're going to see how it goes from, from here, but it's, it's been a very involved community conversation. Importantly, as part of that, it is not the officer's responsibility to make sure students know their rights, it's actually the students and therefore the school's responsibility to make sure all students know their rights. This was something that the board observed ourselves when we saw information about discipline, that not all students are aware of, the fact that they can remain silent, the fact that they can say that they want their parents present before they have an interview. Importantly, I want to make sure you know that our schools know not to go to the School Resource Officer if, for any ordinary school discipline incident. The School Resource Officers get involved when there's an actual crime that has taken place. But again, what's really important is we've been trying to provide information to students about their rights, and we have more work to do, but I think we made a really solid start this year.
Okay. Thank you. Now, we're going to talk a bit about the achievement gap, which has been mentioned already. It's often cited by administrators, school board members, and certainly the community as a critical issue in Arlington. And a community member cites a little-known fact that Gunston Middle School has closed their achievement gap. So first, are you aware of this? And if so, what do you know about their methods, and what are your thoughts about how their approach could be replicated within every school in Arlington to help close the achievement gap? Your turn.
Yes. So first, let me say again, the school board is painfully aware of the fact that the achievement gap continues to exist. It has not closed, it, we have, we were making some steady growth, it has not closed all the way, and this is something that we have prioritized as part of our strategic plan. Many of our objectives woven through our strategic plan are going to be looking for ways that we are closing this gap. It's fundamentally important to us. I want to mention several things. Test scores, which are primarily what we use to measure gaps, are snapshots in time. Every year, when we get the test information about our students, what's most important is what are we doing next? We have systems in place for principals, individual teachers, and our central office staff to look at our data, find ways to target the students who most need the support, and what we've tried to do then...
I understand you can't hear.
Okay. What we've tried to do is ensure that we are providing the supports that students need, whether it's individualized attention, resources to support their academics. We also want to make sure they have wraparound supports. The whole child concept matters when you show up to school, if there's anything under, if you're under stress, if you're hungry, if you need physical activity, all sorts of things that we want to make sure that we're providing across the board. I want to double down on some things that we do that we don't want to lose because they're extremely important. One of them is a priority that I mentioned in my opening, keeping class sizes small. At the end of the day, teachers are the students' best supporters, they're their first tutors, and they know their students best. And if, if we increase class size, that just reduces personal support. That's fundamental to making sure that every student has an opportunity and has someone who can advocate for them and work with them, whether the teachers have the tools themselves or whether they're able to find the resources for others. The second is pre-K.
Thank you very much. Well, I want to disuse folks of the notion that the achievement gap has narrowed. It has not. At best, it has remained stable for some subject areas that have been tested. The achievement gap is not narrowing. If anything, it's growing. The best that can be said for it is that in some subject areas and for some schools, it has remained stable. Now, as far as redressing it, I am not familiar with the Gunston Program, but if it's a project-based learning program, I'm all for it. But actually, I do have found out a little bit about the causes of this achievement gap from the, from the advice of a student that I just met on the street canvassing the Arlington Heights neighborhood earlier this week. Now, this gentleman is a Hispanic college student, he's an undergraduate at Marymount, he is a Wakefield graduate, and he said that all of his classes feature rote learning or memorization and multiple choice tests that don't really test his knowledge. Thus, he forgets everything he learns as soon as he finishes the course, and he said the solution is hands-on learning and de-emphasizing multiple choice tests, which of course I agree with wholeheartedly, and that is the approach that I would take. Regarding project-based learning, I think that just as it is a good alternative to rote memorization, successful project completion is a good alternative to the SOL. So again, I don't think you have to be particularly, you don't have to have an advanced degree to figure out what's wrong with learning in the United States today. Now, one of the things I will say about APS is APS has been very successful in promoting white students despite the handicap of rote learning, and this is to its credit. This is a problem that is pervasive across the United States. Thank you very much. Community members have raised a question about the High Intensity Language Training Program, or HILT. So please share your perspective on its purpose, as well as two concerns that parents have about it. First, that it takes a long time for students in the HILT program to progress out of it. And number two, they wonder why these students are not allowed to take the PSAT while they are required to take the SOLs for math and English. Your turn. All right. Thank you. I believe HILT is High Intensity Language Training. It is a methodology that is used to bring speakers of other languages up to speed in English, although I believe it can also be used by any learner of a foreign language to increase their reading and speaking ability in the shortest period of time possible. Now, why the students are not permitted to take the PSATs but the SOLs, I would say is probably a function of the educators who developed the PSAT, recognizing that lack of adequate language training may affect performance on multiple choice tests. So they would not wish to subject a kid to that type of testing when they know full well that his performance is going to be adversely affected by his, the fact that he has not completed language training. Now, why VDOE doesn't do this, I don't know, but it's clear that the educators who run VDOE, the Department of Education, and administer the SOLs are a different crowd than the people who have developed the PSATs. I would, I tend to, if you're asking me to say which of these authorities I would most respect, I would go with PSAT people because I don't want to subject kids to testing for which they are not prepared.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's a great question. So first of all, I want to share the really good news, which is something that we haven't been able to advertise very well as a school system, which is when students do exit from ESAL HILT, they perform just as well on a variety of measures as our students who are native English speakers. That is an astounding result for our school system and one that I wish that we could advertise more. This is on SOLs, this is on taking AP courses, and it's on graduation rates, students who have exited that ESAL HILT program. So obviously, the question from there is, let's make sure that kids can get through this program. One of the things I do want to mention, my colleague, Tanya Tolento, is here, we work as a school board as a team, of course. Tanya has been very involved in this topic, and so when it comes to issues like this, we obviously job-share, share expertise with each other, and listen to and work with each other, as well as, of course, working with our Advisory Council on Instruction, who has a committee. We get information, and our staff, we get information from a variety of sources, all of which feeds into what we can do as a board. But two things are extremely important, I think, on this topic. One of them is pre-K. Another thing I've learned recently, especially as we've gone through the boundary process, is our community isn't necessarily aware of how much pre-K we offer in Arlington public schools. I was an advocate as part of the Early Childhood Advisory Committee 10 years ago. We actually, 50% of our kindergartners are in our public schools the year before, in our public pre-K programs. That's also on top of 95% of our incoming kindergartners who have had pre-K experience. Pre-K, teachers tell us in kindergarten, is extremely important for English language learners. They're getting a full year of learning English before they're starting kindergarten. It's a great way to make sure that they're ready to go. The other piece is simply tools and resources for our teachers, both our ESAL HILT teachers as well as our general education teachers. This goes to class size again, obviously, the smaller the classes, both in the general education, but as well as our ESAL HILT program, the smaller the classes, the more personal support our students can get. And again, we want to make sure that they have the tools and resources they need and to be consistent with those all the way through our system, elementary, middle, and high.
Thank you very much. Now, what do you believe are the challenges that face African-American and Latinx parents as they strive to support their children in school, and how would you propose to help?
I'm sorry.
What do you believe are the challenges facing African-American and Latinx parents in supporting their children, and how would you propose to help?
That is a great question. I've had the opportunity, especially as a school board member, to get all over the community and talk to parents in our schools. When you're a candidate, you get to do that pretty much all the time, out at farmers' markets, at the door, everywhere. Let me start by saying what, there are certain things that all parents from all cultures share in common when it comes to our students. When talking to parents, one, there's always a great deal of pride. There's also always a huge amount of worry among parents. When we meet each other's kids, we can see how amazing they are, but every parent has a combination of pride and worry. Those worries do vary across cultures and for different reasons. We do have parents that are fundamentally worried about whether their child will be bullied, whether their child will be called names, whether their child will be treated, have low expectations from their teachers, things like that. Other parents will worry that their child isn't getting the support they need within the classroom, or that their child isn't succeeding but they don't know why. These are things that really all, all parents experience, or different types of parents experience, but there are certainly cultures that have some of those worries more than other parents who worry about the B+ that their kid is getting instead of an A. I really do get, hear things like that from parents. So it's really, it's a tremendous pride in students. Parents want to know more about what's happening during the, the school day. Not all parents feel like they fully know what's happening in the classroom. And on top of those two things, pride, worry, I would just say there's a sense of bewilderment among all parents. One, why their children is so, why their child is so amazing, a lot of parents don't quite know how, how they became who they've become, as well as sometimes an uncertainty about, again, what types of things their child is being exposed to, especially when it gets to middle school and high school, where parents aren't as well-connected to the daily activities and the things that students are experiencing.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Well, I would say minority parents in general aspire to provide a better life for their children through a professional career. The only way to achieve this is through secondary and post-secondary education. So the goal of APS should simply be to put all, all students on a college-level track. Where this is not possible, either because of lack of financial resources or lack of student interest, APS should provide robust vocational training that will enable further educational opportunities at a later date in the student's career. And I believe that there is such a robust program ongoing at the Career Center today. I had the opportunity to hear the director of that program testify at a school board meeting, I believe it was during the budget process last spring, and I was very impressed with his presentation. So certainly, if elected to the board, that is one of the programs that I would probably be least critical of at the present time. Thank you very much. Now, we actually will be accepting questions from the audience, so we have to share the mic because I don't believe you all have one out in the audience. So I'd like for you to, I guess, come up. Yes. Because I can hear.
My mic is working? Is it working?
Yeah. Okay. Yes, my understanding is one of them. Okay, that's great.
Yeah, I would like to know, I'd stand up. Yeah, I'm, I'm not used to these mics, as you can see, but anyway, I'd like to know a little bit about, what is the student-to-prison program? You know, the word prison for a student seemed like it would stigmatize them. You know, we are, I'm a peer-to-peer support specialist, I'm in a training class, and one of the things for, in arm and arm, and one of the things that we deal with is the stigmatization of a person that has a prison connotation with it. So we refer to people that's coming from prison now, to get away from that prison connotation term and say that they're citizens after they're being punished. But once you stigmatize a student with a prison term, I'm, I'm sure that you can come up with a better terminology in putting a kid assessing his advancement towards prison. You know, if you were a student to prison, no, that, that doesn't sound too good. You know, I'm telling you from a personal, personal experience with that.
Okay.
You know, that stigmatizes the student.
Right. And I think you're referring to when we, when candidates talked about the School-to-Prison pipeline, not a program.
It's a pipeline.
Right. But it's, it's not a program, but it's just talking about the pattern where some students...
I understand that. I understand that very well.
You just don't want, you don't like to use that term.
The word prison, I mean, we're in a reality society, and we deal with reality. For a student coming into the designation of prison, that, that shouldn't be, that shouldn't be used, you know?
Okay.
You know, you got too many other terms that display the negativity in this society. Prison, going to prison is a negative connotation.
Okay.
It does positively work, but it's a connotation that, that people associated with evil.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for that. Another question?
Good evening. Good evening.
Good morning.
Okay. Good evening. My question has to do with teachers of color in the APS school system. We know that it's lacking, for lack of a better term, it's lacking. And I think that our Hispanic kids, Latino kids, our African-American kids need to see more teachers like them. What can you do to promote this or make this happen in all of Arlington schools?
Okay, and I believe Barbara went first to the last question, so. Well, obviously, we have to focus on that when we're hiring. We clearly, if we do not have a representative number of people of color in front of our classrooms, then we need to refocus our recruiting program to achieve that particular goal. I think that's fairly obvious, and of course, it's cost-free, because a teacher is a teacher regardless of the color of their skin, and if you've got to hire for, because of increasing enrollment, which APS is constantly doing, it's, you do have an ideal opportunity to recruit. So I feel that this is actually one of the lesser problems, I mean, it's one of the more solvable problems in the Arlington school system, because it's basically a cost recruiting from the minority community that does not cost any more than recruiting from the white community. That's my question.
Thank you, it's a very important question, and it is absolutely one that we are all aware of, and what's important is that our Human Resources Department is very aware of this issue. Our students are ment, I'm sorry, our teachers are mentors, and students do look up to them, and it is important for all students to recognize and see role models and people they look up to and who respect them back. So it's definitely something that we're aware of, that we talk about, that we try to do. Recruiting is the main way to do it. Part of recruiting, of course, is to have a strong pay and benefits package. You recruit better when you offer good jobs with good pay, so we do that piece. But we do reach out, our HR department goes to a variety of colleges and universities, including historically black and others. Statistically speaking, what we're low on are men of all colors, as well as especially Latino and Asian teachers. So that is definitely something we're aware of. We do have a few programs that help us with that. One is called the Assistant to Teacher Program. So instructional assistants, you can become an instructional assistant, for example, with special ed or in kindergarten, though you don't need a teaching degree for that. So we have people who take jobs like that, and then we have programs for them to pursue a teaching degree, that we help them with that. We also help teachers get dual certification and other things. So we have ways, tracks, that we encourage people who are working in our system already, and people who live locally, to work up through the system and become a teacher. So we're really trying to find ways to grow our own teachers, and including, by the way, recruiting students. And we have a scholarship, the Retired Teachers Association has a scholarship program for students who want to become teachers. So we're trying to grow our own. We're certainly reaching out broadly to recruit, and at the end of the day, we're providing good pay and benefits to make our school system attractive to as many people as possible.
Thank you, do we have another question?
Yes. I have a question about segregation here in Arlington County. One thing that we rarely talk about, especially as it relates to concentrating students who receive free or reduced lunch, lunches in the southern portion of the county, so what you'll have is many of the elementary schools in South Arlington will have 30%, 40% of the students receiving free and reduced lunch, whereas the elementary schools in Northern Arlington, where the more affluent families are, will have 1% or 2% of their students. And I think that translates, that contributes quite a bit, in my opinion, to the gap between how well students of color are doing compared to the white students, as well as the resources that are getting into the various elementary schools. For instance, in Northern Arlington, the PTAs are able to raise a lot more money than the schools in South Arlington. So my question is twofold. One, do you think that's a problem in Arlington County, particularly as it relates to elementary schools? And two, being that Arlington County is only 26 miles, the smallest geographic county in the country, would you be in support of busing students in order to achieve an economic diversity in all schools?
Thank you for that question. We're actually having these conversations right now, probably most of you know, because we are doing boundaries, and we look carefully at a variety of pieces of data when we think about how we're going to district our different schools. Demographics is one of them. Just so you all know, the statistic about whether a percentage, what percentage at each school are students on free and reduced lunch is the one legal approach that we can use to talk about demographics in our different schools. Free and reduced lunch is not fully correlated with any race or ethnicity, but it is somewhat correlated. It is also, by the way, not a poverty statistic, I just want to point that out, it's something I forget sometimes, I sometimes say low-poverty schools. Free and reduced lunch is above the poverty line, so there is, and let me make very clear, that it is not a direct indicator for not being able to succeed in our schools. It's extremely important for everyone to keep that in mind. While, again, there is correlation, we do have a gap, most of our free and reduced lunch students are doing well in our schools. That said, we have, as a school board, looked at that issue about the cluster of free and reduced lunch students that we have more at certain schools, we're looking at it now as we do boundaries. We are doing what we can to balance that out. However, we do have a couple of parameters. We can't even afford to bus students that could walk to a school, but we also don't want to. If you can walk to your neighborhood school, that is good for the student, that's good for family and community relations, and it's good for your, it's good for students' health, which we know is correlated to academics as well. So we don't want to bus students away from a neighborhood school if they're able to walk. We do have a number of students who don't live in the walk zone of their school, and so when we think about boundaries, it's the students that live farther away from any neighborhood school that become the ones that we look at when we think about redistricting. At the end of the day, your point is important, and I certainly hope that you'll be talking with the county board candidates about it as well. As we have looked at boundaries, what we found to be the biggest barrier to shifting demographics across schools is simply the fact that we have extremely dense parts of Arlington that you simply can't draw lines through and put kids into different schools. So there are a lot of limitations on the tools we have as a school board.
Thank you. Well, that is an excellent question, but I don't think you're going to be happy with the answer. I oppose redistributing the school population based on participation in free and reduced lunch, as I'm a big advocate of neighborhood schools. First, neighborhood schools are there for the convenience and safety of our children. Second, due to increasing congestion throughout the county and the number of option students that need to be bused already, more busing is simply not feasible. Yes, Arlington is economically segregated. It is segregated due to gentrification aided and invented by Arlington County Board. The solution is not forced busing, the solution is forcing out a corrupt political machine. Now, to flesh that out a little bit, I know that's hard for a lot of the officials here to swallow, but I was part of a group of 24 tenants living in moderate-income housing in Westover this year who were forced out of their apartments, okay, to make way for luxury townhouse development. Four apartment buildings housing about 50 people have been, were demolished on one street alone in, over the course of the past year. Arlington's response to that was to put on indefinite hold a petition brought forward by a citizen of this county, which was his legal right to do, to designate the apartment buildings in Westover as local historic and thereby prevent their demolition and destruction. So because the county refused to even give this gentleman a hearing, 50 people have been evicted from their properties in, over the course of a past year and a half. And a lot of those people were people of color. The gentleman in question who was denied a hearing is actually a white male retired union leader, and so I can appreciate where you're coming from.
Just listening here to this debate, I am a graduate of Arlington County Public School. I graduated from WL in the United States, and it seems like this, these debates are still occurring in a vacuum. Like all of these, like I was just looking at these Achievement Gap numbers and the programming, and you're saying that the county board is in a strate, sorry, is in a process of strategic plan. What I want to know is that, is the Arlington County School Board committed to not doing strategic planning within a vacuum? Because it seems like the loudest voices, which are often in North Arlington, are part of the process at the exclusion of those of us in South Arlington, and those of us who are people of color in the community. And I want to know, is the county school board going to be committed to not strategically planning in a vacuum and will be reporting back out to these communities, not just at these types of forums, but throughout the entire process?
Okay. Well, I certainly hear you. This same point was raised last night by a woman who was a member of the Career Center Working Group that was tasked with designing the new Career Center High School just on the current site of, or near the current Mulberry Library. Now, this lady was very concerned because she was denied access to demographic and budgetary data that would have informed the task force on what to design and where, or how to design the school. Oh, but she also wanted information about curriculum, that's what she wanted, not demographic. She wanted, she wanted budgetary data and she wanted curriculum data so that the workforce, the task force could be better informed on what to recommend to the school board. She not only was not, she not only was denied the information that she sought, which in my opinion is very, was a very reasonable request, but she didn't even get a response from the superintendent. Now, I tend to give the superintendent high marks for a lot of things, he's a very aggressive guy, but to deny this task force the information that it sought can only have resulted in one thing, an ill-informed plan. And that, and when in fact, I read the recent report that was issued by the task force, I was, I was very concerned, not so much by the report itself, but by the fact that it suggested that the decision to cite this school there in the first place, though subject to a public process, was truncated. That is, there, some people did, were given an opportunity to speak at a public hearing on the subject, and the staff did brief the public on alternative plans, but there were too few alternative plans, and in my opinion, there was not enough community input. But I can understand if the school board members would quarrel with me on that, because I think the fundamental problem was the fact that when the county board itself was apprised of the fact that a new high school was needed, it took other options off the table. Thank you, I'm told we can have one more question, and I think, I'm sorry.
Thank you for that question. I'm not sure if you want me to refer to the strategic plan part, or just a general how we operate. I've mentioned the strategic plan mainly to show, just to demonstrate that we do have our eyes on, you know, those walls, and it's, it's just a set of goals that sort of keep us focused, and that's what that is about, and everything that we, that we look at as we go forward in terms of how we're doing, our performance in terms of strategic plan, are absolutely shared in as many ways as we can. One fun fact about the school board that I'd like to share is, there are five members of the school board, and we all live in completely different parts of Arlington. In fact, we only have five middle schools, and of the five board members, we all sent our kids to different middle schools, or at least some have two different kids at different schools, but we span the different middle schools. What that means is, we're a board that really does represent the full community. We all ran for the board, not just me, the entire board, because we truly care about this whole school system, and we are fundamentally committed to being transparent, working with the community, and supporting every single one of our schools. Some of the things that we are most excited about right now are happening in South Arlington. Audrey mentioned the Career Center, that is going to be the site of our next high school. It's an amazing program now, it has extraordinary opportunities, hands-on learning, project-based learning, our fastest-growing new high school program, Arlington Tech, is a great high school program, it's attracting a lot of families, and it's going to continue to grow, and it's attracting some of our best staff from around the community. We are going to make the biggest investment in that site of any investment the schools have ever made. And by the way, the schools right now are also the largest developer in Arlington, so we are investing aggressively in a South Arlington site right now to provide an amazing high school for the whole community. Another school that we're tremendously excited about is Drew, which, through the building of Fleet Elementary, is going to become a new neighborhood school, we're investing resources there, a great new program, excellent principal, and we're really excited about what's going to be happening.
Thank you very much. We have one more question.
Ladies, what are some things that you have done, or some things that you will do to mend the damage already done to our black and Latino youth? And could you also speak to how the damage already done contributes to the Achievement Gap?
Okay, it is your turn. Thank you for that question, that's a very difficult one. You know, at the end of the day, supporting every single one of our students in every way possible is what our school system is about. We take every student where they are, how they come to us, we have students who start with our local public schools in pre-K, we have students who come at a much higher age and start with a different set of assets perhaps. We take every single one where they are. Are we perfect? No. Is there more that we need to do? Absolutely. Teachers, I said in my opening, fundamentally care about every one of their students. They know when there are problems, they know often what that student needs, they often feel their hands are tied, they're the first contact and biggest supporters for their students, but they need the resources, the tools, they need the flexibility, they need to be empowered to feel they have a voice, they need to feel safe so that they can advocate for their students and advocate for what their students need. If we can have a system where our teachers feel completely supported and able to support every one of their students, we can bring every single one of them along. Our goal has to be that every student in our system, whether they're behind, whether they're ahead of what we call grade level, we're helping every single one of them grow one year every year. If we can do that, I believe we'll be, we are a successful school system. Are we doing it today? No. There's more we can do, it takes investment, but it also takes just plain supporting each other, something that Arm and Arm I know is a piece of, and by the way, Arm and Arm is one of our partners among many. It takes family and community engagement, but it also, and it takes a community like ours that fundamentally believes in investing every year and has done so decade after decade in our school system. We have a strong public school system in Arlington County, and it's because of this community that we do so, and really appreciate that support, but working together, I believe we can make progress.
Thank you. Well, I think we all recognize that the achievement gap is a very accurate barometer of the damage that has been done to our minority communities. That is the fundamental problem, and that's the one that we're about to solve. Now, as far as non-solutions, I think the first thing that we have to do is get rid of symbolic solutions like changing names of schools, which will do absolutely nothing to make life better for minority students or their parents, and will in fact only serve as a means to divide the community. So I, what I would recommend instead, and I had mentioned this earlier, is a robust tutoring program in all underachieving schools throughout the county that will be funded, by taking the superintendent's recommendation, the superintendent did recommend this in his budget proposal earlier this year, to increase class size modestly by no more than one student per classroom, to free up both classroom capacity and funds to direct to the tutoring program that I have in mind. But this tutoring program does not have to be expensive, in fact, it can be the cheapest program in the county if we recruit volunteers from among our retired community. And so with a very modest increase in administrative staff, I think that we could adopt a tutoring program with the $1 million that we're going to save when we decide that we don't need program with the $1 million that we're going to save when we decide that we don't need to rename Washington Lee High School, we can jumpstart that tutoring program next year. And we can augment that program with volunteers consisting of retirees in the county, many of whom are looking for something useful to do. We have one of the most highly educated populations in the United States, these, many of these educated people are retirees from the federal government, project managers, scientists, bureaucrats of all types, these are the people we can recruit to this program. Thank you, and thank you for your questions. Now, we will allow our candidates to make their closing statements, they will each have two minutes, and Barbara, you go first.
Carol, thank you very much, and Audrey, thank you for the discussion, thank you all so much for coming out and for your excellent questions. We did talk about a lot of issues this evening, I wanted to share a few final thoughts with you, especially about why I am the right person to continue the important work of the school board going forward. First, proven experience matters. I have demonstrated a deep commitment to learning about and contributing to our schools, programs, teachers, students, and families all over Arlington. Second, in a time of rapid growth, tough decisions must be made. My approach is always to do my homework, know the details, listen and engage with the community, ask questions, and ultimately make informed decisions. I always explain my vote. And finally, vision. I brought a vision to the school board about providing a 21st century education to all of our students, supporting our teachers and staff, and engaging our community in positive constructive ways as we work to address our school system's growth. At the end of the day, I'm running for reelection because I care about every one of our students and families. I believe in our teachers and staff, and I know that there's still more to do to ensure high-quality schools that support all of our students. We face continued challenges, but we are the community that's ready to take on these challenges. Please continue to engage, participate, and share, please vote on November 6th, and I would be honored to have your support. Thank you.
Well, as you know, I'm Audrey Clement, the IndyPenny candidate for Arlington School Board. My campaign has pointed out some major failings in the current board, among them excessive capital spending with millions wasted on schools that have insufficient capacity when built, overcrowded schools with thousands of kids crammed into trailers, declining test scores, a persistent minority student achievement gap, and most importantly, a lack of transparency on the part of the school board. Renaming Washington Lee has been sold to you as a social justice issue. The opposite is true. As one of the first public high schools in Virginia to integrate Washington Lee is in fact a civil rights landmark. One of the original black students, Charles Augens, signed a letter in the Sun Gazette opposing the name change, which was also signed by Carmella Hand, currently on the board of the Arlington Black Heritage Museum. We do not need to defame a Confederate general renowned for his military prowess who sought to reunify North and South after his defeat in the Civil War. We need to follow the leadership of the black students like Charles Augens who integrated WNL during the Civil Rights Era. If you're concerned about the direction of Arlington public schools and looking for better leadership, then look no further. If elected, I pledge to eliminate divisive and costly measures such as renaming schools, build schools, not trailers, on time and on budget, reverse declining test scores, close the minority student achievement gap, and do all of this without demanding more money from county board. If you share my agenda, then spread the word about my candidacy, volunteer to help, donate to my campaign, visit my website at audreyclement.com. Together, we can make Arlington public schools provide all students with an excellent education at a reasonable cost. Thank you very much for all of you, for all of you participating in this debate, and certainly thank you to our candidates, Audrey Clement and Barbara Cannon, thank you for your time, and we will have a five-minute break before we start the county board debate.